Educating, informing, serving. TV keeping government honest.
I'd like to call the order, the meeting of the Brookline Select Board for Friday, February 21st. The time is 6:31. First up is review changes to the agenda, if any. I would like to suggest that we table 6A, the paving RFP, until the March 4th meeting, because I'd like to involve the road commissioner, who we will be appointing that night, in this discussion.
You want to do an RFP on the organizational then?
Well, I think we should try to.
Because there's different components that are going to be required to get the right RFP out there.
Well, considering, I think it's probably a good idea, because we can't wait.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think we should, I think we should try to do it. It remains to be seen whether we can get it all figured out and decided that night, but I think we should try, because the longer, I mean, if we push it until the 18th...
Yeah, here we go.
Then we've just lost a couple of more weeks. So I think we should try to do it that night. I don't know whether we'll be able to finalize everything, but I think we should, that would be the goal. Is anyone opposed to that strategy, so tabling that until the 4th?
No.
We'll get the road commissioner.
Yeah, you can have a conversation prior to that.
Exactly.
Give him all the information and he can be...
Yeah, in that way, he can be involved in this discussion rather than us.
It's not totally part of...
I think we'd end up having the discussion over again anyway. Okay, so paving RFP 6A, we're going to table until March 4th. That was the only change to the agenda that I wanted to make. Any other changes?
Just, I need about a minute or two for it. Suzie's gonna...
Okay, we'll add that as 7D, under Old Business.
Yeah, meantime, I'll figure it out.
Okay, so we'll add 7D first, Suzie's little peanuts update. Anything else? All right, here are none, we will move on. There are no surprises in scheduled members of the public, no unscheduled members of the public. We'll move on to approving the minutes from February 7th. On page 1, I only saw a couple of things. Up under Town Officers, they have what Mark Bills was here, so if you could add Mark Bills there. And then, under Approved Minutes, the minutes from January 22nd, 2019 should be 2020. That was because of my bad agenda, just in the bold header. And then down under Discuss Road Equipment, the last sentence, as Mr. Dunn noted, that there had been a meeting with Mr. Bills, I think we should say Mr. Wellman and Mr. Clark.
And then the second paragraph under the same thing should be Mr., a second paragraph under Discuss Road Equipment should be Mr. Jones suggested that this be presented at the next meeting, at which time the other committee members could attend. See what I'm saying?
Now, let me catch up with you. Page 1, okay. Discuss Road Equipment Purchase Next Steps.
I think that, that piece, if I'm there, it says, well, I agree, you should say Mr. Wellman, but then, and Mr. Clark, Archie wasn't actually there. So that's, and I did specify that, that we checked with Archie, but he wasn't at the meeting, so I just think it's best if we take Archie's name out of there.
All right, let's see. Discuss Road Equipment. Last sentence of the first paragraph. Mr. Dunn noted that there had been a meeting with Mr. Bills and Mr. Wellman.
And maybe discussed with Mr. Clark, because we discussed it with Mr. Clark.
Well, that was what I heard.
Yeah, that's, that's the, Archie wasn't there, but he once considered, so.
He was discussing.
So it was a meeting with Mr. Wellman? And Mr. Bills, and then it was separately discussed with Mr. Clark.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. And then the paragraph below that, Mr. Jones suggested that this be presented the next meeting, at which time the other committee members could attend.
Which time? Got it?
Anything else on page 1?
You had just noted something earlier.
Oh, sorry. Under Approved Minutes, the bold header has 2019.
Oh, it does.
So 2020.
Let me coddle those. Okay, good.
Anything else on page 1? On page 2, the only thing I noticed was down under the Set Agenda for Next Meeting Bold Header, again, there's a 2019, and that should be 2020. And then down under your signature, you probably took the last date, so it should be February whatever it was, 2020. Those were the only things on. Anything noticed on page 2? Anybody else? Okay, then I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from February 7th, as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bruce. Any discussion? Here are none. Well, who's in favor of approving the minutes from February 7th, as amended, signified by saying aye? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, so those are approved. Moving right along, we have tabled 6A, the paving RFP, until March 4th meeting. So then we're on to 6B, the Sterling with the Heffers Bank Race. Guy, do you want to just fill us in on your, you had a quick meeting with Wade?
Right, Wade was here from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, the insurance carrier for the town, and he said at minimum that the racing organization should submit a insurance policy, naming the town as an additional insurer. And I spoke with Wade, and he said he will forward to the town, to you, you know, that bit of information. I will get in touch with Cicely Eastman, who sent us the email, and ask her if she's, you know, what her intentions are, and see if she has an insurance policy already set up. It's a big organization, I would think they, they, they thought of this, but that's what Wade said, that would be the minimum that the town needs to have, just to ensure that, God forbid, if someone got hurt or something else, the town is insured through their policy.
And then Guy, will you also ask her about what their plans are as far as traffic?
Oh, yeah, preparation.
Safety, or whatever they're planning?
I'm going to use the model that the Wainsville, the Tinson Hill did, and it was really well organized, well done, you know, pick up on those things and see what her, her thinking is, and you know, they may have this already in order, but we don't know that until we ask them. So that's basically where we all come.
That's great, thank you for doing that. Any other thoughts that people have at the moment about that? I think we obviously just want to make sure that they're prepared for safety and liability in an event that, I think, one should get injured during it, while they're in our town. Okay. Thank you for that. Moving right along to Old Business. First up is 7A, Discuss Road Equipment Purchase Next Steps.
Well, I think that, and Archie and Doug aren't here, but everything that we discussed last time, and everything we put in the recommendation, still stands. We all are in agreement upon that, so I don't think there's anything new to bring up.
I have called J.D. again from Adele, right about right?
Yeah, Abel.
Abel. Abel. And I heard in this conversation, he's on the Select Board, to understand the difficulty is to get something go through in this valley, but he cuts us chase. He is going to keep us in mind if we have, I told him what we, we had in mind, that we felt the piece of equipment that we were looking at was a little too big, and if he has any additional information, he's going to contact either me or, or Mark. I told him preferably Mark, he should talk to me about equipment. I mean, if you want to talk to me about cars and tractors and stuff, that's one thing, but I've never really been on an excavator, so to talk to that long dude. So I channeled him towards a man that's going to run the equipment, and what's going to happen is?
So I know one of the things that had been discussed was the idea of trying to pursue renting a suitable piece of equipment, rather than the piece of equipment that we're already planning on renting for the knowing. Has there been any more progress on trying to get estimates on what that might cost?
That piece that we rejected could be rented.
What might be available?
No, I'm still waiting to hear back.
Okay.
Information to help us make that decision, but nothing's come back.
Okay.
And that piece of equipment that we turned down, that we were talking about, could be rented from Adele, or from Abel.
Abel. This is the Volvo thing or whatever? Okay. So we were, I mean, obviously, we already have, outside for us, the piece of equipment.
The mower.
Is that what Fairfield?
Already. So it, so really, it's about whether there's a, a piece of equipment that we might target for purchase, that we might want to consider renting instead.
That has just more...
That's still low, but that's whether we can figure out what the pricing might be, and whether that's something that would make sense or not. All right. Okay, so really, at the moment, there's no other thought needed from us, or input needed from us, we're just basically waiting to see what we might find out about pricing, and then make a decision as to whether we pivot to try to rent something else other than that we've already planned on renting.
I think that, yeah, I think we need to get the information on the machine that we think is ideally suitable, and then if it's way too much, or unavailable, then we...
That was my, that was one question. Did you set a cap in thinking how much the town could afford for a piece of used equipment or new equipment in your committee?
Purchasing?
Yeah.
Hmm, we did not set anything solid, but I think that we're all in agreement that, you know, around, it's, it's unreasonable to consider buying something that's over 150.
Yeah, 50.
That, that, I think that that's probably what we all agreed about, we don't want to go above that for sure.
For new, yeah.
I don't believe there's any need to go brand new, or go, 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 that.
Given what we saw before, we should go get something that's a lot cheaper than 150, that's right.
Right, and things that work ideally, 75 to 100.
Yeah.
Is the price range we were...
For used, for looking, yeah.
Just, you know, with warranty and, and parts and stuff like that, it seemed to make sense. However, you know, if something comes up that's clean and nice, and in there meets the price range less, or tiny bit over, you'd be considered.
But we won't get one with a warranty. Guy, the one that we were looking at originally didn't have a warranty, did it? I don't believe so, because...
It had the standard used warranty that they give, usually 30 days, and then they also give a, a bit of a, you know, again...
Because I asked J.D.
The organization itself has a good reputation, and he said that, you know, if something catastrophic happened within, you know, a very short period of time, that they would make it good.
Oh, no.
But you know, that's, those are words.
Yeah, those are words.
I think moving forward, I'll speak with Mark, and we'll just make sure that we have for the next meeting, those numbers for rental prices and possible availability. And another benefit to that is that our road commissioner will also be appointed at that meeting, and he'll be able to hit the ground running and give him part of this, this process, so.
The next meeting's going to be a busy one. Probably couldn't, or can't say like, it doesn't need to be ready for that meeting with the meeting after, because I'm not sure we get to it in the next meeting.
Well, it would be a relative, I think that having the information would be good, and we should not drag our feet, so. But yeah, I'm not saying that we have to suck up the meeting with that, with that...
We'll be here, it's the longest meeting yet.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on that? Flying right along. Next up is 7B, Town Meeting.
Okay. So...
Where things at?
Facebook, that went live. Few people weren't humored me, which was fun. Gwen did, Gwen humored me, that was it, basically. But then I did the front porch forum earlier this week, so it went out a day ago, so I'm trying to stagger everything. So the beginning of next week, I'm going to have the listserv go out, because then it's targeted specifically, so hopefully people have just noticed stuff by being exposed. None of those platforms are specific to Brookline residents, so this last one, the last push a week out, like a reminder for anyone who's already seen stuff, or people who just hadn't yet. Also, I've been harassing them when I see a person and telling them that they should probably remember that it's at night and so on. So we have a couple people who are bringing like entree casserole style stuff, so there's two different people doing that now. We've got some sides and some pies, and then I'm going to make some stuff. And what Sarah said is that a lot of times, people who just always bring stuff to town meetings, always bring stuff to town meetings.
Yeah, the problem is a lot of people just show up and stuff.
Yeah, so I think we have a good, like, there's, I know that enough people bring stuff, and I'll make some things too, to supplement, so that I think we're, with a couple, few extra people who just show up with stuff, I think we'll be fine, so.
All right. How about...
Do we have coffee made?
Paper plates, muglery, stuff like that.
We do.
We have, we have the coffee pot here, the coffee urn, we have, we have quite a bit of paper plates, and spoons, and cups, and so forth, but maybe during the course of the week, if you want to come and take a look at it, and see what your needs are, and if we have to, you know, tell me, and I can go to Walmart and get it, use the town credit card. I think the town should be able to afford that. And my last thought is that someone should probably get Julie to do a last reminder, you know, send out a blast, a last reminder. You know, I don't want seven people sending out the same thing, so one, one person should focus on getting Julie. I'm going to try to get ahold of Bob Oded from the Reforma, and make sure that we can get a, an article in the Thursday or Friday paper, or the Weekend Edition, you know, as close to the event as possible. And hopefully, we've, we've spoke to a lot of people, I mean, we gave flyers to everyone who came in to pay their taxes on Saturday, the posters are up in the post office, they're around town. Julie already sent out a thing, you're on front porch forum. I mean, we've done everything humanly possible, yeah.
And I, I'm in contact with Julie, so like I said, I will have the listserv do a week out, so early next week, they'll do...
Yep.
I'm going to see if I can get special permission from, from Chris up at Verben. I put poster up on the board, just over on the side, just for, just for a couple of days before the...
Front center.
Just put it up front on the gomaglass door, so that everybody, you know, many people walk in there, 3,000, so that would be, might be beneficial. I also put one up on WW too, for what that's worth, people going to go WW for it.
Any chance, are you wearing a sandwich board, walking up and down?
That'd be weird.
I usually put a little spot there, so... I'll make sure that we have lights outside, which have been fixed. I'm trying, most likely, we're not going to walk around back, however, I noticed tonight, I've been paying attention to it, that we're going to, it's going to be light at 5:00. It's going to be light right up to 6:00, it'll be twilight, it could be lit. Everything will be lit. The thing I was screwed up last year, I didn't get that film step right downstairs, and it froze our asses on, excuse me, so I'll...
It's going to be even more so now, because you're not having the sun coming in like the other, like during the day.
So I'm going to talk to Olivia next week, make sure I understand the third sets of, turn it up when we get in here, 4:00, whatever, to start setting up.
Yeah, so what is, so let's just recap what the plan is as far as setting up. So did we think we start setting up at about 4:00?
That was plenty.
Okay.
I think that was plenty.
Yep.
Because then people start trickling in with the food.
Joey, it takes the coffee...
And you were able to be there at that point?
For it to do a full pot.
And Joseph, I think you said you were pretty sure...
What's my coffee pan?
If I want to contact Stan, no, because Julie gets to doing that kind of stuff.
And right on topic.
I could email and ask if you want to...
Takes two and a half cups of coffee grounds.
Yeah, if you, yeah.
We only have tons of people, four, five people, that's it.
I'll give the coffee.
Too sweet. And if we have any, if we break, if we break the bank and have zillions of people, which can always go next door and get chairs out of church, there's tons of them there.
Yeah, exactly. Hopefully, that'll be a problem that we'll...
A problem we can deal with.
Karen Partridge, like, you know, she did acknowledge the email that I sent her, and she's going to try to work it, because normally, on Monday evening, they're at Bellows Falls, but she seemed to think that some way, somehow, she would fit it in, but I haven't heard anything since then.
Okay, has anybody contacted Scotty Javashian?
I, well, I waited unfortunately until this week, because I don't have kids in school, and I forgot it was vacation, so last week wasn't on my radar, and I was like, oh, I got it. So I'll try them again on Monday, and they'll be, none of them are at this.
Unless you want to hit them with an email, so...
If you want to hit them with an email, then I'll just follow up with a phone call, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, nevermind, stuff to do with this.
What else about Town Meeting are we not thinking of at the moment?
Who's coming at 4:00? Who can be there?
Well, I'm, Gwen and I will be there.
Okay, I can be there, I'm going to be a little early.
She's like, I guess.
We'll set up here, we'll set up here on Sunday for the election, Monday, we can be there, because, you know, we'll, 4:00, we can do it, you know.
I told her we'd bring the coffee.
Okay, so yeah, I can bring the coffee, I'll set up the coffee urn at 4:00, it'll be ready at 5:00. Takes one hour for it to get...
It's a very big hour.
Yep. So I'll get, I'll take care of that, and then, like I say, we just have to take a look at the plates and so forth, and napkins, and see what we need.
My recollection from last, from last year, although it was a little bit, might be more so this year, is we probably, somebody should probably plan on bringing some extension cords and maybe power strips, assuming that there probably will be people who are bringing crop pods or things that they might need to plug in the power, you know, that was a little bit.
And I think we, Guy and I, I think we have a couple of the power cord things, where you can plug in more than one.
Right, yeah, we just have to be careful, because you don't want too many going into one circuit there.
That's what I need, it shuts itself, so I think...
So we'll bring whatever we've got.
I have extension cords.
Oh, what else?
Probably just one power strip. I could branch those two.
Depends on how many things people bring here, so...
Because I think if we use the heavy...
It could be wild, or it could be one crop pod.
When you wire a house, you put more power tubes.
I don't know, it's, it's going to be, you know, a strange thing, you know.
It's different.
Yeah, and I'm hoping that people will respond to it, but I don't want you to be disappointed if they don't, because they've been conditioned for so many years doing the same thing, that, you know, you could say something, so...
And they're also conditioned to not go, so.
Exactly.
They're breaking two habits in life.
Right.
Come at night and actually come this year.
Yeah, right, the first year of the change may not be the, you know, whatever, it may take a little time, and that's okay.
Yeah.
Joseph, what were your thoughts?
Maybe this has already been addressed, but are we going to discuss the time of the town meeting, at the town meeting?
Oh, I think we should.
Yeah, I mean, well, if...
Are you, you mean another business?
Regardless, if, yeah, if 100 people show up, or if 10 people show up, I think we should discuss it, see what people, if they're at the first sign.
If they do, on Monday?
Yeah, absolutely. Because I, it's certain, we've ordered last year to make it Monday, and, and I've talked to a lot of people that are stoked it's on Monday, and I've talked to a lot of people that are, that think that it should be on Tuesday still, so I think that we should probably discuss it that way.
Yeah, you can do that at the last article, which is...
Yes, or in other business, someone can...
Because the moderator runs the meeting and...
We could also like whip up a really quick survey, and hand it out during the potluck, and have people return it that way, so we can kind of like better analyze it, because when you discuss things during a town meeting, you're getting the loudest people in the room who are the most comfortable speaking in front of other people. You're not necessarily getting like, you know what I mean?
No, absolutely.
Like, so we really want to try and pull the group, not that anyone can bring it up under other business, they're welcome to, but we can also just, I mean, I'm having like four questions, simple, like, did you like it? Does this work for you? What would you like better? You know, something that they can just make work, feel like they're...
But the people that are, the people that are against it won't be there. That's the first thing. The second thing is, the last...
I'm not seeing that people who are against it still show up to say things at town meetings.
Yeah.
Last year?
I was against it, and I'm going to be there.
Yeah, Jake will be there.
Yeah.
You beat me up.
I think the biggest problem with being during the day is people have to take off work to go there, and the worst part is, on the election side, they always have the election the same day as town meetings.
Oh, now that's a bit, isn't it?
And that means, and that makes it really hard, like, I can't go.
That's not fair.
So I have to stay here, and Guy is trying to run two places at the same time, and it's very difficult.
I think, yes, you, if, whether I'm...
The state hasn't changed it.
Yeah, well, I, whether I'm on select board, not next year, down the road, it should be seen that when we have a primary, or where there's a conflict, it should automatically be Monday night. I don't think it's fair, especially a select board member and the town clerk, got to, you can't be at two places at once, so I guess that's what I'm trying to say. It's not fair.
Well, it doesn't mean we'll always be on the select board, or always be the town clerk, but it makes it difficult for managing it.
Sure. So I always said 365 days a year, and you have to have the same day, and the same day didn't make a lot of sense, but it's the way it's been.
I agree 100% with all those problems, but we also have to consider that maybe having the primary, the election on the same day as town meeting is a benefit to some of the townsfolk.
Yeah, it could be.
As Eric picked it out.
It very well could be, so I think that, I think that we should just have a discussion, that way we can involve the entire town. Maybe, maybe a million people are going to show up, and we're going to be like, this is awesome, and they all love it.
Yeah, right.
And maybe everyone shows up because they're angry at it, but either way, I think a discussion is just the best.
Well, yeah, angry part's going to happen, because the last two years, it was resounding that they wanted this, that they wanted, and we had this big discussion, the vote, whatever.
We'll find out.
We can, yeah. We'll see, we'll...
Revisionist history, we'll say.
Okay, let's bet some money on it.
I mean, like history, but we're written by winners out there.
Fair enough. Let's put some money on it. Who is it now?
Yeah, the fool about the windows was untested, right?
Yeah. Okay, anything else about Town Meeting? All right, we will see everybody there. Okay, next up is 7C, the Wyndham Regional Broadband Project, so the survey for that has gone live and a bunch of marketing material. I've sent out an email with the link through the listserv. I will speak with Guy about getting, I got to write up some verbiage and give you something to put on the website with a link for it. I've printed out flyers, which I will start to put up places and put some things here. We have little cards, whatever, little slips that give people the URL that will...
When does that...
Cut up and have at town meeting for people to be able to take.
Okay, yeah.
We'll also have some here. My goal is to kind of get all of the stuff ready for here by Tuesday, so it can be here.
And then we can bring it down?
And then have a town meeting, and then we'll continue to have it here.
Does that serve...
The cutoff for, the cutoff for the survey is March 17th.
All right, does that survey, all right, because, all right, we're a household with two people in it, is that one per household?
Well, in theory, they only, though none of their material says this, they only really want one completed survey per...
Household.
Household, unless it's an apartment situation, but...
That was my, that's why I never went into it, because I...
Per household, they really only want one completed survey. If they get more than that, they'll just have to figure out how to deal with it. Like I say, none of the material says that, but I do know that the goal was just to get one completed survey per household. If people have not already, I would really appreciate it if all of us could complete the survey. They really want it to be done online. I am going to make a few copies of a physical printed one, which we'll leave here, and I'll have a few of those at town meeting. The problem is, well, I won't bore you with the whole discussion that we had about the, what I still consider the ridiculous logic of not doing, of not reaching out with physical surveys for people, when your goal is to try to identify who doesn't have adequate internet of not reaching out with physical surveys for people when your goal is to try to identify who doesn't have adequate internet service. But that seems to be somewhat lost on this. And it's also part of it is a cost, but there's not, there's not, there's not the money to be able to do a mailing to all of the residents, which really would be the ideal thing to do if you really wanted to get everybody. But in any event, if we get any paper surveys or if, if, I'll, I'll leave some here and if anybody really needs to do it by paper, we'll end up having them all come back here and I will basically take them all and enter them online because
Okay, yeah, I can help you with that.
They don't have any facility to deal with the paper ones. So anyway, we will hope that as many people as possible can do the online one. So yeah, so that'll all happen and then I'll do another wave of emailing to people through the list serve in a couple of weeks to see, to catch anybody. Like I said, the, the deadline for it is in, is March seventeenth and then we'll see how many results they get. So that's that. So that's moving along. Um, okay, and then moving on to our ad item of seven D, um, Suzie's Little Peanuts building update.
Not much.
What's going on?
Smile, everybody. I talked to Jerome Holt and he came back from Florida. And he's going back again, or whatever.
He's gonna come back from Florida at the end of February, last year.
Guy, but like for some reason, he's.
Spring training is just starting.
He's going back down again. But then he's been doing work down there, but I talked to him about the details, I told him he got bid. I told, um, talked to him more about the details of what we're doing. And he, first off, he is gonna paint the, the wood with, after he's stripped with the oil based primer and then prime it over, then, then, then two coats of paint afterwards, so problem on the sand, not play with that. And he's gonna probably do it as soon as the water comes up. So what he'll do is he'll take a, one, one set window out at a time, bring it back to his, close off the window, bring it back to the shop. This will bring it back, so we're just gonna do it like that. But I would say reasonably by June, probably have them all done, that's, that's my guess. Um, but he gave you every indication, other than a major paint job, like we were gonna paint the whole building, he said he'd do it in August or whatever. But with this case, he can, he can work this and he's gonna do it right off, so it's a little tough to explain with the whole name. That's the first thing. The second thing, that water, water meter issue that I talked about last time, I thought, I made clarification to go Scott Boback to replace it and I went in there today to see if he did. And I don't think he did. Not that I'm in any rush out of four or five hundred dollar bill against it, but it is what it is. After we saw, thirdly, after we, I saw that bill from Nancy Burford, the water testing last time, I discussed with Guy about it. You got the email back.
Yes, true.
I called her, I had a discussion with her about it. They are, the state, gonna make us do that five hundred dollar test towards the end of the year again.
Yep.
Because they're reas- there's a baseline, then they wanna reestablish a baseline, then you get a three-year break. But they didn't allow any money in, in, in government, nor paid for it, town's responsibility. So, let me see. Oh, but she also sent, I don't know if you all got it, but she sent us the, the schedule as to how they're, how she's gonna do it and the cost. Lastly, I don't know if I mentioned this last night, but, last time, but Olivia wanted me to put a sprayer on the faucet and that didn't work and the only way to do, put a faucet in the infant room is to, is to replace the faucet itself. And I haven't talked to her yet, but I'm gonna tell her. That's great, you paid for the faucet, I'd be happy to install it for you, but I'm not putting out, that is not making it possible. So that's it, I think that's all we know. Oh, yeah, everything I've talked before. Beautiful.
Ooh, right.
Excellent, thank you.
What?
Short and sweet.
All right, don't tempt him.
Don't tempt him.
Wait a minute.
I've made that mistake before. Learn from my mistakes. Um, okay, next up.
This is your bit of mistakes.
Uh, update reports, Mr. Tanza.
Um, we're selling dog licenses, the absentee vows, we've only had eight so far. Um, also Ron Bell was here Thursday and he dropped off a conceptual plan for the salt shed with a, 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 a estimate cost and so forth, I have it here. Mark, if you wanna take a look at it later on, it's right up at the second drawer. And um, basically, uh, the ones kind of slowed things down, but um, we're still plugging along. So hopefully, oh, by the way, the rabies clinic, which will be the fourteenth of March, it's um, thirty-five dollars for a combination shot, twenty-five dollars for rabies, fifteen for the distemper, but the combo would be thirty-five.
It was the other way around, I think.
And, no, it's twenty-five for the rabies, fifteen for the distem- well, whatever it is, the combo is thirty-five, it's the same price as it's last year. And Dr. Miles Powers will be the attending physician.
Then people should get both.
Yes.
It's really important to get distemper shots for your.
And as I tell people, you know, these, these, you know, reduced rates for, for vaccinations are great, but everyone knows that their dog should still go to a veterinarian and have a physical like, like us. So basically, that's what it is.
Every, I don't have dogs, they have to understand this, other than me. Every dog has to have a tag, yes?
Yes.
Okay, well, I had two dogs from my next, the Libby's evidently rented or gave in their house to the winner, to somebody next door. And the two dogs, they're wonderful dogs, they're beautiful dogs, but one of them clearly doesn't have a tag. I, I went to look at the tag just to feel like with the name of Dogma, so I could talk to the dog. They're both beautiful dogs, but the youngest one, a black and white dog, had no tag on it at all.
Um, I cannot police the, the residents.
I'm talking about that for any of them.
But the animal control also maybe, maybe she has a plan because, you know, it'd be nice if we could knock on every door and say, do you have an?
I know.
We went from a hundred thirty-nine to a hundred twenty-eight, um, you know, just get the honor system. But the most important thing is God forbid if the dog should accidentally bite somebody, you know, he's having a bad air day. Or if the dog decides he wants to go visit Malita and doesn't get back home, cause he's happy, uh, at least the tag will be able to find out where the dog is and we can connect them.
And that goes for, for people that are only renting for six months, they still need a license.
Well, I saw a dog, wow, let's figure out what the name of the dog is, I can update it. He's starting to jump on the side of my car, he's ready to kill her, him or whatever, nice dogs, they're really beautiful dogs, they start playing away.
So that's basically what's going on in your office, so.
Cool, awesome, thanks, sir. Uh, Mark, what's going on with you?
Nothing of significance to report, other than uh, monitoring the roads and then talking with Archie. He's replenished the sand at the shed again, due to the weather we've been having and so. The only other thing is he's brought to my attention, once he gets the roads cleaned up, he's spotted several small potholes on the pavement that, um, when we get proper weather to apply, that I can. I have uh, some of the patch in stock up at the town garage, so if we get a warm day, I'll try and get those plugged. And um, at sometime in the near future, we generally go around and knock snowbanks back. I'm not sure if we'll need to do too many areas this year due to the lack of snow, snowbanks. But um, certain areas that does have a ice edge on the edge of the pavement, where the water can't escape, I'll probably go around with a grater and, and punch some holes for that. And usually with the town meetings coming, we'll make sure that snowbanks push back around there for parking. And other than that, I'm still waiting to hear back from some of the companies that we've called about for rent prices. And that's basically it. Still working on the list of small priorities.
Thanks, Mark.
Yep.
Um, okay, moving on to communications, emails. People may or may not have gotten it, I mean, it's a standard thing, we're still ways out, but it's, um, we got an email from the regional commission just reminding them that we need to get them their lit, the list of town officials after our reorganization meeting, um, which we will do.
I usually do that, uh.
Yeah.
I, I get the format.
Yes. Um, the other thing that I got just today, and I had a, a brief conversation with her about it also, is that, um, Samara, um, and I can pass this around, I have a feeling it's gonna be more detailed than people are going to necessarily want or need, but anyway, we are, the treasurers are changing payroll companies. The payroll company that we have been using was bought out by another company and since the buyout, they've, our treasurers have been having all kinds of problems with difficulty getting answers to things, mistakes happening on the part of the payroll company, such and such. Um, Samara has been helping them find another payment company and they're in the process of switching to this other payment company and there's more detail about all of that. It's, it's the prerogative of the treasurer to make those decisions, but I think Samara and Sarah just wanted to make us aware of it, that they were making some changes. So that's an email that Samara sent today, just with a little more detail about it, about why they're making the changes. But I, to me, they are all very sensible and good reasons to be changing to someone else. Okay, and that was it as far as emails. Regular mail, um, we have something from V-Trans Training about a host of local roads, work zone flaggers, air brake systems, geo textiles, stuff like that. Mark, do you wanna, I don't know if there are any of these that you might actually have interest in.
I've been all of it.
Ask them to. Uh, then we got something from the Census Bureau about the boundary survey that, as we discussed before at Wyndham Regional's suggestion, we're holding off on sending back the boundary map verification until they've done some checking on the mapping. I'm going to reach out again to Jeff Nugent at Wyndham Regional and just see whether they've made any headway about that, I'm just gonna hold on to this, cause I don't think people need it. To see whether we're okay to go ahead. Guy has checked the maps against his nine-one-one maps and other things and is confident that there aren't any mistakes in ours, but I just wanna make sure that, um, that Wyndham Regional is, has in fact something that they think might impact our boundaries. Um, then we have something from Prevent Child Abuse Vermont, which is um, a letter about their services and uh, a request for planting a pinwheel garden and making a donation, perhaps that would happen. Then we've got something from Brattleburg Development Credit Corporation, which is, if I can open the envelope. It is a flyer about a local stewardship workshop that we're doing at the end of March.
Who is that?
Uh, Brattleburg Development. Um, and then right behind all that will be the payors. The payroll does not need to be signed, I came in and signed it, um, before Wednesday.
Well, those are going around, um, the BCC information that I took about that grant, um, except for the fact that the deadline was like last week, so way too close for us to like plan on anything. Um, it would be probably a good one to keep a heads up for next year. Because basically you submit a project you're working on or have, you know, enough, you know, you've already put like the plan in place to work on, related to like economic development or, you know, is it anything that connects to kind of like, there's, there's a few categories and I can send out a little summary, cause I watched this PowerPoint on it. Really good PowerPoint, anyone who's watching. Or I'll just send you the summary. But there's like four categories of things that you could submit projects related to. And then basically like if they pick your project, you get some kind of support or, and I'm not sure how much of it's financial, but it's definitely not something that could hurt to do if we have projects in line leading up to this time next year. Um, and it can like get you more resources. Can't hurt.
I would suggest if you, if you want, I, I think it probably does make sense to send around links to it and whatever sort of summary. And then maybe also include the planning commission folks and the meeting house and the historical society folks, basically any of our.
It could literally probably just be the, the meeting house, it could be a specific thing they're working on as a sub of their.
Yeah, potentially, right.
And it doesn't have to be a brand new project, it'd be something that's in progress that like you're, is at least as long as it supports the initiative. Or it could be you're only at brainstorming phase, you, you know, you have people involved, but it's not, you know, it doesn't have to, it's not actually super strict on the criteria, as long as it supports one of the goals of the initiative. Um, not that that means you get selected, you probably get selected if you have a better, you know, more solid.
Sure, right.
But definitely, kinda looks like, but it's, but I feel like when we got that first letter, it would have been too late to decide to come up with a project and then get, you know, it's almost something that if people are gonna be interested, who are involved in the town, thinking about it now, thinking over the summer, what, what, what might wanna, yeah.
For the next cycle, yeah. No, that's a, that's a great, I think, yeah, that'd be great if you could share that out to, uh, to us.
Link up with the link to the PowerPoint that he was saying.
Relevant, um, committee folks, that would be great.
Unless we don't send that one.
Okay, so while that's going around, while those are going around, let's just talk a little bit about agenda. So, I mean, it'll be primarily the reorganization meeting. And then we will also put on it a paving RFP, which we may or may not be able to realistically deal with that night. But I think we should put it on there in hopes that we could maybe make some progress on that, given the kind of urgency of getting something.
I think that we might as well also put on, uh, something about a rental, piece of rental for them.
Okay, yeah, we can do a brief update on that. Um, and then I'm gonna suggest, other than payors, that we sort of forego anything else on the agenda for that night. Was that, do you think that?
No, that's, I think the organization part is worthy of enough time to.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's typically the only thing that we do during that meeting, but maybe we could squeeze in. Make enough work of the rest of them.
I may have some information from the race. You know, I'll offer that if, or you may have the email from Wade, but I will still touch base with Cicely.
Okay, yeah.
I think I'm well.
Okay, while we're waiting on that, I'd like, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we approve the payroll warrant, two zero two zero dash three four, dated February nineteenth, twenty twenty, in the amount of one thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-four cents, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Shelby. Any discussion? Uh, okay, all those in favor of approving payroll warrant two zero two zero dash three four, dated February nineteenth, twenty twenty, in the amount of one thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-four cents, signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Any extensions?
Me, I never read.
I sat in front of him so long, I thought he'd read it, so I handed it back.
That's all right, it's not a big deal, it really is.
It's already signed.
I trust everybody. I just can't have somebody looking at, at the thing and me approving it when I need to what that, it makes sense. So if there's, nobody's watching up here, but.
Um, okay, now I'd like to make a motion that we approve accounts payable warrant two zero two zero dash three three, dated February twenty-first, twenty twenty, in the amount of four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-seven cents, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Shelby again. Second by Shelby again, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving accounts payable warrant 2020-33 dated February 21st, 2020, in the amount of $4,750.77, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? All right, those who vote approved. We've done those, we've set our agenda, does anyone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Wow. I'll surprise everybody, I made a motion that we adjourned.
Gwen makes a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Bruce. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at 7:22.